...County Council, if you would please rise and say a pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce Greg Brenman with the inquiry and rise fellowship in Florida. That is correct, Greg?
Correct.
Okay, very good. If you would give us a moment of prayer, please.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Father, we just come in the name of Jesus to invite your presence to just, Lord, ask your blessings upon this time, this morning. We thank you for these servants of our county to serve us. We just thank you for their work and their efforts that they have been doing on behalf of us. And so we thank you for their dedication and their service. And, Lord, we just ask that at this time, as they go into this meeting, that you will bless their hearts as they administer the business today. Lord, that they be good stewards of what you have entrusted them to do. Father, we just ask that you give them clarity of mind and that they can be discerning of the matters that are before them. We thank you for the work that you are doing in this county and things that are taking place here. Lord, we're just honored to serve and to be blessed by working together in this community. So, Lord, we just ask your blessing on this meeting, on this time in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think what's in front of you is killed half of us, but get some of this information out to you. Obviously, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items that wish to be pulled from the consent agenda? I will go first. I would like to pull the treasure, the three treasure issues, and the three EMS issues for further discussion.
One of the three is a new one.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I know Doug is on call with the county, but I would still like to pull three just to have an explanation for what we're just...
I would also request EMA transfers to be pulled, please.
Okay, any others?
Good for them.
Would you prefer the consent agenda as amended?
Sorry. I'll give that the trade soon. Motion, approve consent of the... Second, a trade soon. Marking. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero, and four. The record stopper is absent today. Quick rundown on financials. Between five months into the year, we should be about forty-two percent of budget usage. Currently, my department's prosecutors are thirty-eight percent, commissioners are at forty-nine percent. Council at thirty-three, EMS at forty, 4D at thirty-nine percent. Fuel cap development really doesn't have a budget for saying they're still sitting at one percent. So, Tim, if you'd like to report, please.
Yeah, thank you. EMA is at thirty-three point seven-six percent year-to-date utilization. I don't have any concerns there. Mike and I have been emailing back and forth. I will say that the reason I wanted to pull the EMA transfers is to have a better understanding, from my perspective, as to how we're going to handle these utilities and startup costs. I did ask Mike that in an email, and I think we just need to have some kind of a discussion around, is he going to bear the brunt of that startup as transfers within his budget? Or are the commissioners going to take on some of that? Is the coroner going to take on some of that? So, anyway, no concerns from EMA, other than I want to ask those questions once we get to those transfers. Q and Bridge at thirty-one point six percent. Highway, motor vehicle, highway is at thirty point seven-nine percent, no concerns. Local road and street, thirteen point seven-two percent, no concerns. Supplemental adult probation is at forty-nine point two-nine percent. That's a little high of the benchmark you mentioned, Scott. I do want to call out the second deputy probation officer is at eighty-four point four-three percent year-to-date. They've spent twenty-three thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars of the twenty-eight thousand we budgeted.
I apologize, I just told you I looked that up, and I have not, so.
Yeah, that's...
It's the second deputy prosecutor or probation officer.
Yes, yeah, and I'll get with you on that, because I didn't follow up either, so we can both shoulders and blame there. I think they're getting close to that line being out of money. Supplemental juvenile probation, no concerns there. Thank you.
What's that, is that why it's happened? It's almost used to issue that halfway through the year. Is that the correctional facility, is that...
The probation officer?
Yeah.
We live, we live them, and that's what I'm trying to...
We did move some community corrections, right?
That was...
Okay.
I don't know, I just, we just need to check on it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, my department's are health running at you said nine more lines, sixty-four percent. I've kind of last couple of months said that we realize what's happening with her, just going to help her lose some money extra later on. Chairs, chairs at thirty-one percent, jails at thirty-one, animal control at twenty-five. I know there's a lot going on with animal control, so I was going to try to bring it up and kind of get everybody up to speed on what the total is trying to be. I did not make the mistress team in the early, so... Treasures are at forty-two percent.
And what the videos...
Ethan?
I haven't had a chance to talk to my department heads this month, but as far as the numbers, everything is okay.
My transfer station is at thirty percent. Corner is fifty-five, and we know there are a lot more deaths this year. She's at the corner conference this week because she's on the state board of the government of the county. That's good, we're representing at the state. Day clerk is at forty-two percent. Soil and water is at forty percent. Terrell man is thirty-six percent. Good shape.
I didn't have a question, there's a couple things I was going to bring up on the budget at large, but...
Running down some of the, some of the accounts, looks like County Council sits at five point three. Edit is at one hundred and ninety-one thousand. Running day, three point five million. Three point five million. Riverboat at two hundred and ninety-five thousand. And lit correctional facility is at three point three million.
Is there a riverboat?
Riverboat is at two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
And you asked me a question about the correctional facility. We have a supplemental lit painted, and it was one hundred and twelve thousand, that's why I asked.
Okay, because I noticed on the correctional facility, typically we're getting about eighty-four thousand.
We get the same amount every month.
Same amount, about eighty-four thousand, seven sixty, thereabouts. And I noticed last month it was one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, so I asked that, what that increase was, so supplemental lit correctional.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going back to the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. First, the emergency management department.
Do you want me to do this first, since...
We can, yeah, that'd be fine. Make sure we don't lose anything to an animal.
Let's go.
Hey, come... Yeah, I know, I'd have to beat you up.
Well, I think the last meeting, I presented everything as far as the changes that we wanted to make in EMS department. So, I guess I would just open up, do you guys have any follow-up, any questions as far as what we're looking to do?
The first one is the Medicaid cost report, that's a new one? If you would just address that.
Yeah, but what that is, is we, Malcon, which does our Medicaid cost report, also does our fuel tax credit, that we get money back from all the fuel that we spend, so they calculate that as well. So, that's seven hundred dollars is just to, is what I need to finish paying them out for that as well, just to pay them off.
And the fuel tax credit amount was fifty-five hundred dollars, so that's money back to us that they calculated for the fuel. Not really a rebate, per se.
No, I don't know how they do that whole calculation, but the more fuel we spend, the more tax credit we get back, so...
Doug and I have been talking about the other two, the remaining two. I think in generalities, we're taking a full-time position in his assistant supervisor, and we're spreading that, those responsibilities out over the three chief supervisors, that are all located in the floor, I believe. And during budget time last year, we had the discussion and thought process, and it seemed like there was quite a few chiefs and, you know, versus the number of Indians, and maybe potentially some duplication there. So, this is with the absence or the leaning of Rick, I think Doug is extremely pro about in talking with the other two supervisors to get them on board, to accept a division of some of those responsibilities. Technically, we're still getting the same job done, just with one less person, and I believe he was in excess of sixty thousand budgeted for last year. So, I am, I am in favor of transferring those amounts. I mean, technically, you know, oftentimes, we're faced with appropriation and allocation of new dollars, and this is just the opposite of that. We're going to save the county, I think it was around eleven or almost twelve thousand dollars annually, if we can continue this program. So, I would, I would make a motion to approve all three of those transfers for the EMS.
Second.
Did we have a plan in place, or was there a conversation around then defunding? Or does this, in fact, defund the assistant director position?
Well, I don't, we've not had that discussion. Would that be something in the budgetary process that we could do, or should we do it now?
If we're not going to use the line...
I agree.
I would make a motion to defund the...
Well, we've got a motion.
So, do we have to set the salary ordinance now, then, for their amount of pay?
Yes.
And your amount was?
It went from...
I thought it was like two dollars, but it's not.
It was like a dollar twenty, I think. It's going from eighteen fifty-five to nineteen seventy-five, probably.
Excuse me, what was that?
Eighteen fifty-five to nineteen seventy-five, it's a dollar twenty. One nine seven thousand, twenty-nine cents.
And I will retract my motion, because I think the proper procedure is we should amend salary ordinance first prior to making the transfers. So, I will amend my motion to adjust salary ordinance from eighteen fifty-five to nineteen seventy-five for the three shift supervisors.
I'll second that.
We have a question.
Circle.
No, we got a council member, but before you defund it, don't you think you should transfer the money, and then you defund it?
That's what I was going to do. I was going to adjust salary, make the transfers, and then... Technically, you would have three motions, correct? The motion was to adjust salary ordinance from eighteen fifty-five to nineteen seventy-five for the three shift supervisors. I made the motion, Ethan seconded it. Is there any further discussion?
So, I, I have some concerns in the optics of this, specific to the way that this is going to appear, that we are yet again giving mid-year raises to people who already have job descriptions at a given wage. My question to you, Doug, and I think we talked about this last month. What's your, what's your comfort level in keeping things running as is, with the understanding that we're entering into a budget season, and there would be a greater appetite for this effective January one, twenty-three?
I mean, I don't know. I haven't really discussed that with, with the three supervisors, to see if they're willing to take on those fees, knowing that in January, that increase would come. So, I haven't had that conversation with them.
I think the question you're wanting to ask them is, per our last year highway department, they're going to get a raise here immediately, or soon. Come budget time, we would opt, me personally, to not give them another raise, because it's, it looks like they're getting a double raise. So, January first, they will not get another raise if it is agreed on, is that what you're...
No, I mean, I understand what you're saying. That's not what I'm trying to communicate, though. I agree with, with what you're saying. In principle, I'm not ready to make a concrete statement that they will not get raises. What I'm trying to say is, the perspective, or the perception, is a better word, is going to be, once again, we're open for business midterm raises. Not knowing the context or the background, or, and as a process, I'll speak for myself, I'd like to get away from that. We set the budget, we try to take into consideration every possible factor. I understand personnel changes can't be forecasted accurately, but that's what I'm trying to say. I agree with your point as well, but I'm not making a concrete statement to that effect. I'm just saying, if you felt like you could affect some, some static behavior here, then if we could hold on till budget, that would be my preference.
And like I say, I don't, I haven't had that conversation with them yet. I, I'm, I think they would probably do it, but I don't want to, I don't want to put that out there, because it does, they are having to do some stuff. They're having to come in, they're going to have to come in and pick up some shifts that they're not normally scheduled to have to do. You know, like, just for example, we've had four call-ups this week, and, you know, I've worked two or three of those days. So, it's putting a lot of extra burden on myself as well.
Are they getting paid overtime for those shifts?
Yeah, they will.
So, they are being compensated?
Yes, they pick up an extra shift, but for the daily duties that they do, the scheduling, which is a pain, you know, training, those type things, they're not really getting compensated extra for those, for those things.
And I mean, that's why I was comparing it to the highway department, because that way, he did a lot of work extra for a long time, and he didn't get compensated for it. So, I'm with him. I don't like this midstream change.
I completely agree with what you're trying to do. Like, I understand the movement, and I, and I agree with it. I think in the long run, it'll be better for the county and be efficient for your department. I just don't like having to do it in June this way.
The only thing I want to say about this, and I, you know where I stand on this, what, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, I agree with you. But if we add a zero to this, and say Doug was going to save us a hundred thousand dollars, and would we sit here and say, would we tell the department head that they're trying to save the county money, saving the taxpayer money, and because we're not in a budget cycle, we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it? Now, I think, and I do delineate those requests between most of the requests that we have received, is that they want to spend more extra. That's, this is the difference that I see with this proposal. And so, I do see this as... And I would say too, if this was October, November, we were going into the new year, you know, if it's two or three months, it would be a different story, but if it's six months, so it is, you know? I just want to be fair to them as well.
And I, I, Tim, I completely agree with you. I, you know, we ran into a hornet's nest last year, trying to budget and figure out, okay, they got it in, I think it was March last year. You know, some of the... It was an absolute hornet's nest, and I completely, completely agree. I also reiterate Josh's point, this is a unique, unique situation that I stated earlier. We are saving the county money, and we're getting the job done. And I think for the foreseeable future, we want to be able to continue this process. And that's why I think it is unique enough to make that move now. Is it going to still be a hornet's nest at budget time, potentially?
But I think the sting will be is that, you know, are we going to be willing to give them another raise on top of them already getting raised? But they are doing more work, so that's going to be a topic of discussion then.
Yes. Any other discussion?
What's the motion on the floor?
The motion on the floor is to adjust salary ordinance from eighteen fifty-five to nineteen seventy-five for the three shift supervisors.
Line one thirty-five.
Okay.
All right. Motion, seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries six, zero. Okay, second motion is to, oh, adjust the salary ordinance. Second motion is to go ahead and do the three transfers for EMS to seven oh six. When the Medicaid cost report, the sixty-five hundred for paramedic supervisors, and the nineteen thousand went to overtime, the last two out of one thousand three oh one, or one thousand one oh two, the EMS assistant. So, that's the motion to approve those three transfers. So, move.
Yes, your seconding.
I made the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion number two? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries six, zero. Third motion, to defund the assistant EMS director position. Do I hear a second?
Is that a motion?
It is a motion, yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defund the assistant EMS director.
Take that out of the salary.
And take it out of the salary ordinance. Second, good. Motion and a second for defunding and taking out the salary ordinance, the assistant EMS director position. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. The motion carries six, zero. Thank you, Greg.
I would almost miss it, because that delivery weather regulations is going to be here in about fifteen minutes, so... On my transfers from the printing to the training, that one is, at the budget cycle last year, the council had reduced my conference and my training lines, because I hadn't used it, ever funded, early on in the year. And usually, my training and conference goes towards the end of the year. So, that's the reason why I'm asking for that one training, because I do have one training coming up at the end of this one. And then I have another one going on in October, along with my conference. About two forty-five will cover my conference, that training in the fall, and this training that's coming up at the end of this one. On the other two, switching from the expendable to the telephone, that's the addition of moving the telephone line, the four-two, four-three number that I had down in the basement when we bought the building, transferring that and the internet out to the new building. Didn't look at having the coroner take anything, because she doesn't have a phone line. And when she's there, it'd be just like you guys, if you have a meeting down there, she just jumps off the wifi. So, that's why I looked at just picking that, that whole thing up myself. And then on the utilities and emergency crap, those bills are going to start coming in, and it's additional to what I already had budgeted for those sirens that I paid utilities on. So, that was my estimate on what I was going to run out through the rest of the year. Now, at the commissioner's meeting, there was a portion of the money, I guess there was two hundred and twenty-five thousand allocated, but only two hundred and twenty-one thousand is unchanged, that used. So, there was a little bit of a talk about using the rest of that, toss at this year's cost. But that's totally up to you guys. I was just looking, just trying to do, get it taken care of, and not...
Within your budget?
Within my budget, not asking for any additional. So, I mean, it's just going, it'll be a little tight on my equipment line, you know, hopefully I don't have any major issues come up.
Yeah, and like I said in my emails to you, in the short term, I'm fine with it. So, like, this transfer here, I don't really have any big issues with. But I just want to know, and I guess for the rest of the council as well, like, how these are going to be parsed out going forward? Because I don't, I don't think that your budget, unless we, unless we do something major, is going to be able to sustain an entire building on its own, nor would we ever thinking that that would be the case. So, that, to me, that's a bigger question. So, for the short term, I understand. Long term, I don't, I'm not sure I understand.
And that's the reason why I wanted to ask, to meet with you over, to talk about next year's budget. It was, I'm looking at, like, pulling back in some other areas, and then moving some stuff around to where we hopefully won't have to ask for that large of an increase within my budget to take care of that. That way, there won't be any additional burdens on people and that, but we just have to see how it flows. You know, until I actually see what the bills come in, I've got what the averages were, but, you know, with how inflation just came through, and everybody feels it just skyrocketed.
Well, and I don't know how the building was previously used. I would guess you're going to use it at a... I would guess you're going to use it at a different level than the way it was previously used, right? Didn't it sit empty for a while?
It sat empty for a while, so the lights weren't on as much, but I don't turn all the lights on. I, I keep what lights on I need to keep on, all the other lights are off. I mean, Mr. Begley's been down there a couple times and it, it stays pretty dim. So only the lights that need to be on are on.
So I would assume when you're working on your budget sheets and that, that you're gonna bring us what you hope to budget for next year, and then that'll kinda give us a view where they think they're gonna come bring it from.
And I know in the discussion at the commissioners meeting, it was brought up that the coroner will participate in those expenditures as well. So how do you, I guess my only question on that is how do you split a gas bill?
If you don't, like she may pick up, maybe like she'll pick up the telephone.
I think all of this is somewhat irrelevant because it's all your own.
This budget, especially me?
I mean, I like, I, I like having, for the same reason we have the sheriff's budget for his utilities and the jail or the sheriff's budget, because it gives more, more control or you can hold smaller unit accountable. So I think that that's generally speaking a good thing. What you're losing there is like every, there's rounding errors, every single time you do that. So if we have utilities in ten different departments, you have that rounding error and it's not, probably, you can't aggregate, you can't, you can't assess the needs at the micro level as well as you can at the macro level. So, I mean, the, the error is going to be more.
Well, and I would argue it's not irrelevant because we're gonna have budgets, they're gonna grow exponentially year over year because we're supporting this building where we haven't in the past. So my question is.
I'm just saying that's all in the general fund.
How's that gonna be handled?
Yeah. And, and whether it's in his department or the commissioner's budget or, or the coroner's budget or whatever, I mean, it's, it's all coming down to the bottom line. I agree with you that we need to note that all of that is new, new spending and it, and it is new, new spending that comes before everybody getting raises.
Because all those new money to begin.
Possibly new spending. You don't know that for sure.
There is new, new spending.
There is new spending, but if that could be pulled from another budget, say.
There's gonna be a decrease in your custodians line because they gave the bills now for EMS and the, or EMA and the coroner for their electricity and their water.
And if there's some way to cut the commissioner's budgets, don't hold the number to you, but by utilities of three thousand, then we're gonna cut the commissioner's budget and move it over to his to pay it. I mean, if you don't.
No, I mean, we had, we had X number of usage before. We have X plus one. There's going to be more usage.
I didn't say no weather can be, there's going to be new spending, there's going to be new usage. But you, there is a possibility of pulling that fund from somewhere else to get it paid.
Well, it will be. I mean, it will.
So even though you're increasing his budget, you're gonna decrease another budget?
No, I don't think that's true. That's what I'm saying. Like you're gonna have the same old budget and you're gonna have new spending.
You have new spending, but you don't necessarily always have a.
In this instance, I don't think the courthouse utility is gonna go down by thirty-six hundred dollars because.
I'm not saying utility is gonna go down, I'm saying budgets will go down.
That's the, that's thirty-six hundred for utilities. That's the Ebsco, the Duke and the water.
Yeah. It's all new, new.
Yeah. But you're saying this is to the end of the year.
That's to the end of this year. That's like what I figured out the average.
Yeah. Okay.
However, within a year of fulfilling the two-year contract at the investigation center, there potentially could be savings. A year. Potential.
Next one to the section.
Can you approve?
Second. Motion and a second to approve.
All four.
Three, no, all four, yeah, sorry. Paul. They have a motion to approve all four of emergency management transfers. By Ethan Brown, second by Paul Ryder, under discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes. Okay, that brings us down to the treasurer. The treasurer, uh, transfer, a thousand dollars, seven fifty, two fifty, so it's a two thousand dollar transfer. The concern I have with this, of course, this was presented to us in the, in the May meeting, the concern I have with this, and I'm beginning to see more and more times that this is happening where department heads are, I don't wanna say thumbing their nose at the council, but the council's job is to allocate and appropriate dollars, whether it be transfers, whether it be additions, that's the council's job. It should not be the department head's job to take it upon themselves to go ahead and order something, take delivery of something without our prior approval of those dollars being spent. This was tabled at the May meeting because there wasn't much of discussion that I don't think the treasurer was here. But this is for the cash counter and cash counters are significantly different than a coin counter. If anybody knows anything about finance, coin counters, you dump in all kind of corn, coins, it separates pennies from dimes, from nickels, from quarters. It does that automatically. The cash counter counts the actual bills. You still have to manually break down the ones and the fives and the tens and the twenties. So you're already having manpower to break those dollars down prior to even putting them in the cash machine. So I think Josh, you asked for the ROI on this particular purchase of a cash gathering machine. I'm not convinced that there's gonna be much, much return. I know, again, the budget, what do we have here, three or four part-time people there in tax time? I would think if you've got three or four part-time people in there accepting tax payments and you've got two people in the office already, there should be enough people there to count the cash. It doesn't take that long to count, count the cash, I don't believe. So, and to me, not really a caveat, but the, in addition, this was delivered and accepted by the treasurer prior to us approving the transfers. They actually tabled the issue and she went ahead and took the grab of the machine. So any further discussion? Good morning.
Um, Mr. Scott, um, I need to give affirmation that I would never order anything in such a, except if I've worked in business officer my entire life and I know, I know better than to do that.
Is it in your office currently?
The, the one that's in my office was brought in by the vendor as they displayed that. So I'm not obligated at all. I'm not purchased, so I'm not sure. Where did you get that information?
I just.
I don't know that she's been in my office, so.
Oh, I have it. Yeah, I have.
But at any rate, so that's false. And I don't appreciate you accusing me of doing something that I really know is, is against the rule. I'm a very play-by-the-rule person. Let's see, the next thing, what was your second? As far as it doesn't sort and the denomination, that's not true at all.
Between ones and fives and tens?
Yeah, it separates them. It does.
Must be a new machine.
Yes, it is. A lot of unpack and different locations where it's sorted down. Also, it does detect counterfeit bills, which is getting harder and harder to do mainly. And it's becoming more and more of an issue. We've been real lucky to actually find one issue. And I do have a question about that because if it ends up a counterfeit bill, we gotta know where to know whatever came in if we, if one counterfeit's through us this weekend. So this would catch it before that's ready to work. And as far as the manpower, the part-time people that I have come in, they stay at windows when we're really busy and they help take checks and they don't actually touch the cash in that, it's intentional. Cause I only want two people to be responsible for the action, not myself, and I do. Because I am, I am personally responsible if there's any shortcomings in the cash. And quite honestly, I only wanna take responsibility for myself in my perspective because in the past, when I wasn't that way, um, there were more issues and I don't want to have a issue like this. It's just, it's worked out way better just to have one person throw one window, take the cash. So is that what that means?
So if, if these transfers are, you're stating that the loner counter will be replaced with a brand new one or?
It'll, it'll be actually, I'll actually request it from, and then we'll send it in.
You just, I mean, you see the, how, how it appears, right? I mean, all of a sudden.
I, I wish you would, I wish you would ask about it.
You've got a request for the transfers and then that was tabled and within a few days.
Right.
You get the machine in your office.
Well, actually, I, before I did, I wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that it was actually gonna be advantageous because we've never had a cash monitor before and it doesn't. And then they understand that.
Okay, and, and fine, but I'm saying that was rather suspect.
Right, well.
I mean, if you wanted to try it, I, I could, I could have seen you try it during the tax collection period, if that makes sense. And then come to us and said, you know what, this is gonna be very advantageous for us. So let's, let's see if we can't transfer it and go on.
I, I.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would not overstep.
It just, like I said, the appearance is, is suspect. That's all I'm saying.
Sorry.
What, what about the ROI, the return on investment that Josh brought up? Do you have any thoughts on that? Is it save, you know, certain amount of man hours that would justify spending two thousand hours to?
If you're asking if there's gonna be a return on investment for the, the, um, no, I, I don't always think so. I just feel benefitive just to see what it's going to provide. And I guess, I would, I guess if you, if someone didn't pay their tax bill and gave us twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five thousand two hundred dollar bills, I guess the ROI would be immediate.
Right.
How, how is this efficient, but it doesn't reduce working hours?
How is it efficient? It, it, it is efficient for like the customers when they're coming in and waiting at the window and they're counting and we count and then we recount and then stick together and, you know, it, it does, and so it's, it's more of a service, it'd be more efficient in the service we're providing.
But you counted at the window, correct?
Yes.
Initially, I mean, obviously they come in, have a five hundred and sixty dollar tax, tax bill. You count out five hundred and sixty dollars that they bring into your window and then you return and count it again and through the machine?
Um, that would be our, our accounting second time when you can't go through, through the machines. What I would do, count it first initially and put it through the machine, but without getting into a bunch of specifics. The concern really is a bit to the smaller payments, the concern is a bit to when you have larger payments than the smaller.
What percentage of those twenty-five thousand dollar tax bills are cash?
My, my question, if I may. How many cash transactions do you take on any basis?
During tax collections? Probably forty or fifty during our times of our day, forty, fifty people coming during the day.
Forty, fifty a day?
Yeah, during, no, because you gotta understand.